The authorities of Imala Lhene, Steve Chueti, Emma Kazeni, Dr. J.S. Moroka Tembisile and Emma Kazeni seeks to provide a regulatory framework for sustainable agricultural development and to increase employment, reduce poverty for food security because the land that you are here for definitely I will say chair or acting chair before your son can make a daughter of someone else pregnant, he must first make a land pregnant for food security.
Sla loghe, lom tetos vivinho, gulenda au, um tetoge ozos neeta, oguti sazoguti...
A bill must be treated as a matter of urgency and...
Ngenzeka ge ng'azisa, logo tom tetos vivinho, kfunelutwengen toge e putuma.
They must be...
Manje getina jenga bantu base hlanzi, signika nao mpago, oguti uye le paralemande lapokshayakon lom tetu, nibajel ogutige lom tetos vivinho sfunoguti kutikpela uniara smali waluniara lom tetos vivinho ube se lom tetu.
Part of how or why we must welcome you it's because we are also requesting as the six municipalities in the district of Nkangala that allocation of all agricultural land must be done for housing development aided by traditional leaders that will reduce illegal invasion or occupation of land.
Ee, ingwe nyee ge ogu namuge la, la tina, sitela oguti ogunyekfunele negwenze masisha, oguti uma lom slabo tutugiswa pela agutakjangele, noguti abantu kfunele batole izin tutugo ezobe yenzeka.
With that said, I'll say that as the previously disadvantaged, we no longer have land or tightly deeds.
Ee, nga logo ngishkuti tina benze mnyama esa putwa amatuba, tina asina go logo ekbizongutige obuni obom slaba pekalezi amati deeds.
The dignity of these black majorities in the six municipalities of Nkangala it's a tightly deed and as the speaker Imala Lhene on behalf of the district because here we have got people coming from all corners of the region or district, can land be given to the black majority and tightly deeds be given to them, not for them to have a tightly deed which is a death certificate, a land that they will own when they are dead which is a grave.
Manje ge istunsisomundomnyama kuzesbu ye, tina la gulesfunda zosetu, sitela utabantu beitu, banige ezoe pela lama title deed, umundanga itoli e title deed sega file, njengoba bagwenze, sibona ngazuti tina ma title deed ama death certificate, ngoba bantabaningwa watola se bashonile mslabi, strela ge oguti istunsisabantu bageti, we so song...
Second last in my welcoming remarks, acting chair and honourable members of parliament is to say...
Lone committee na ko oguti.
Can all those commissions report be fast tracked? We know that today we are here only for the bill. Be fast tracked and land be given to the rightful township establishment and with that said interpreter, just a bit, if there was land which was dispossessed without the previous government paying a cent, can the land that was depossessed be given to the rightful owners with time or an investigation?
Slaba owata twa gubokoko baabo, na bobazu wazu tubautwalo lom slaba e ba osebenzisi. Ngusho logo ngoba pela abantu baningi abana omslaba e bayachenge iswa gota lom slaba aubui gubo, sitela ogutige logo kwa nga tiknenzeka ngoksheisha abantu batwolomslaba waabo uzeguzo buya istunsisaa.
Acting chair and members of the municipality, the district is working very well with the traditional leadership and there's no land grabbing here in Nkangala.
Hlanzi ni.
Nkangala.
Nkangala, ee la tina sisebenzi sana nupkosie, ngendla entre, nesonpegiile futi ayenzeki lenjoguti umslaba utatwenke Nkanga.
As you continue with the program presenting the overview, I'm pleading with the attendees or yourselves as delegates to focus on what is said, write down and ask question pertinent only to what is raised here.
Engiklakini ye, njengoba mpaga ati oguti, nina kulumani nga logo enizo chelo agona, nama okshio ilom tetos vivinho, ninga kulume ezi nyazi indo ezngati ndilo mtetos vivinho, ilogo ge engenzela agona.
With that said chair, there are technocrats sitting there, they will input and contribute in this bill for it to be made a law and you are all heartily welcomed in the energy heartbeat of the southern hemisphere because we produce more than 50% of energy in the country even though there's load shedding. You are all heartily welcome, feel at home, thank you.
Sla loghe ngala omazwi, ngiti nabaholbe ndabugu wena bobazu baneka lelo, gulenda uye etulapoge sikikrizakona manza okisi, ne azoguti trishia 50% wa manza okisi apumala, na nama ge sina lukrimi krimi gottwa, tina gulesfunda zosetu tina sikikrizaa okisi omning, ngala omazwi nyana mamuge la nonke.
Thank you very much, Consular Kosi.
Ni bongakulu Consular Kosi.
Ee, kuzinko ne kbona oguti ngembela, ngembela kupete mina la nizo shaisandla ma gusho mina, ngiti shaila nu Consular Kosi isandla njenga manje.[1434.00][1434.00](Applause)
For you to see that I'm the one who is in charge, meaning the chairperson, you'll only clap hands if I tell you to clap hands.
Thank you very much. Here as this committee, we have come here to interact with you on the bill that is being processed.
Tina ngendla ngale committee sila, oguti sizo kumana nani ngale bill nama ngalo mtetos vivinho o espiz ngau.
We are going to listen to you and take all your inputs on the bill, spoken and written.
Norma okpaliwe.
The speakers will use any language that they feel comfortable to use.
Iskulume sizo sebenzi sana, nama ilu opunueme umundu afuna oguti alusebenzisi.
It is our experience therefore that since people don't always interact with parliament, once members of parliament are within them or in front of them, they bring and remember all the issues that they want to raise with the government.
Sisbonile ge oguti, ng'anga oguti asifamsaa nga oguti siku manina abantu njenge parlamentenjalunjalu, umasfigilela abantu bayeba kulume izin ez nengi, nezinto ezngati ndi...
Came here with officials from the department because the department is the one which implements all these activities and therefore they know or they must know, if they don't have the capacity to do that, they will report and know where to direct such requests and complaints.
Manje ge ng'anga ya logo sihamba ge ne ikulu esvelemnyangweni department, yizo na ge ezizo wa mugela lei kalose no besa sizo zitata zyo zbiga la gfunele kon.
Will the members of the department please rise or raise their hands so that they can see them?
Bestela ge la baba vilemnyangweni, ba paramenama ba paramisisandla, ba mugele.
So all the issues that you have about the land reform, the land issues, the water and all those things that are wanting to be seen and handled by the parliament.
Manje ge zongele kale nazo ma elana nogu iswa omslaba ezo, umslaba amanzi nama ini, strela ogutige nezi mikisaglele atafula, ilaba bavilaglu yamnyango ge abazo zamawetiba nklasulu lelezo na lezwe inkinga.
This committee has a responsibility to oversee whether the department and the minister is doing the job they are supposed to do.
Le komite ge, linamanza ogbuka oguti, ngabe umnyango nama ungongo she, wenza logo opfunele agwenze.
Therefore you should be confident that this committee of your parliament, when they receive your complaints and suggestions in that particular area, they will be attended to.
Manje kfunele nazi oguti, le committee, le parlament, uma ninaniksho i kalose no e zinga fezwa, e committee linamanza oguti, li ipoke umnyango nama ungongo she oguti, le kalose no basi fezwa.
Again, there are the staff from parliament who take care of all the issues, they record all inputs, therefore you are going to use them because when you speak those things that you cannot speak and those who couldn't find time to speak, their inputs must be written, we will have forms from that table. Will you on that table raise your hands that they will see and bring all those instances to you?
Ee, manje ge esna basebenzi, baseparlamenta.
Paraman alpeti nabanbona gaoxlibanga ndautla.
Estela nuparama, basebenzi baseparlamenta laba, ilaba ge ozoti uma ngabe ukuluma nama ini bayapa alapans, uma ngabe uslule ile nomonashtulanga iskatso oguti kulume okpale pans ezoko mikisaglele atafula, ibona abazo konsego soguti i kalose no ze afiga e parlament.
Their phone numbers and their emails are not private, you will find from them and use them.
Ee, inombolo zabu, zoma kale kokini nama zotrinwa azionimfihlo, nama ma email, zozto laspaliwe la uzfunakon.
See, with the members of the council then we are informed that there will be time that they will need to go and we are happy that they have been with us here, so when that time comes they will honourably sneak out and go to where they are supposed to go and fulfil that mission.
Si bigele ge noguti, kukona i ikulu ze kansele ezizo, ozoti iskatuma shamba zitale u kululeka, manje ge yotuma sekfigele so iskati zinyenyé zipume zha.
And we thank them very much for having honoured us.
Siyaba bongaga la kuul ngogutibeze bazoba mtibimu nyenati.
Then we are going to start with our process.
Sesi akala ngoshe lolu etu.
When we take hands, people will raise their hands and we will take five from other side and five from the other side.
Ee, umundofunukulumu zo paramisisandla, sizo tata abayisishano gloshango ti, spindestate abayishano gloshango ti.
Because everybody who wants to speak must have time, there is a limit that...
Because everybody who wants to speak must have time, there is a limit that every speaker must use maximum of three minutes.
Ngenge ugo ti ge onkumundu funu kuluma, iskulumi ngasiye, sizo begelwa iskates tize, iskates nganyemizuzu emita tu kupe.
Iyabona kabanye ge bayazu ugo ti, noskati me okuma nendoo, ma ipeli three minutes, ngakai kulume ndo ikuluma, ngayezo longu.
Eh, others know very well that whenever you are proposing to a woman, if three minutes is over, it means you can't express yourself as a man.
See, we also have an agreement that abantu nabya bekazi will speak at the end.
Eh, si nesuvumela naso ugo ti ge injuu yopkosbinda bugo, yona izo kuluma ektreneeni seni kulumenonke.
We are happy that they are here, we are honoured that they are here and we want to give them the respect they deserve.
Siyacha bulaga ugo ti banatila, futi sfunu baniga inkluni po eba fanele.
When the speaker comes here, as a speaker, you will tell us who you are?
Uma iskulume siza la, kufanele sakale ugo ti size tule, sisechele ugo ti si ubani.
Do you support or not support the bill?
Ngabe uyaisegele le bill, nama awisegele.
What reasons do you have for supporting or not supporting?
Ma njeke unasipii iziza atu, zoguti uyaisegele, nama awisegele.
What other issues do you feel they must be added on this bill to make it viable?
Ngabe yini enye ona yo officer ugo ti, ingafawa pela gule bill, uze uzo yenza issebenzi.
Our time then has come.
Iskatsi tuge sesfigile.
Oh, oh, just, I nearly missed one something important, but there is someone from the department who is going to tell you about the bill because some of you have read it, some of you have gone through the advertisement, but we have someone from the department because they are the implementers, they are going to brief you on this before we proceed.
Ma njeke guzo bakonis kulume sizo zala, sizo ntraze la gafupindi, ugo ti lomte tusvinyo oma ilana nani, ngoba pela labantu abassebenza la department, ibo abassebenza ngalo mte tusvivinyo, ngaleonchele la ge bonabazo straze la ngane, uze sibeneshto besa ugo ti le bill ikuluma ngan.
This is going to be done by Ms Lydia who is the director on land use and soil management.
Logoge guzo winziwa, Ms Lydia, o bugeneke umkundi si glomnyango, uksachenge iswa, gomtlaba ganyeno patwa gwa u.
We also want to apologise for those who did not manage to come.
Sifunage ulisa kula abo, abanga zange batwale tuba lokpumelela.
The situation here is demanding that people who come from very far for safety reasons, it is not why.
Sifunage ugo ti sitoliiswa kula, abo ngenge yesimo, so ugo ti kukona bantaba buya ugo ti, gotoa oma utubuka ezoe pepa, uyabon ugo ti tra, be banga eke bakonukfigala, na nooma ge leo, lo lili kulunga wanele ugo ti, be linga momata, onkumundu obega figilela, gotoa siyaba kolisele, ngogo ti banga finyelelela.
But those who still manage to go to the next hearings and those who can, who wants to write their presentations, they will write them and submit to the staff.
Gotoa ge la abo abasa fisaa ugo ti baye kwamanye ama public hearing sazo bakona bavunyele, na la abo futi abanga kunu, gotoa bafuna ugo ti bapale pansi, logo vumelegile abapale, besa bamigisa kuleli atafula.
It is guaranteed that they will reach parliament.
Sian kensegi sa ugo ti, loginso benekusho, nomenekpalile, uzo figa e parlament.
Over to you, Lydia.
Eh, sese ngezele gua, sese Lydia. Nyabonga, mm, kondiso hlelo.
Um, members of the parliament.
Malunga e parlamente.
All invitees.
Eh.
All invited guests.
Eh, abameniwe.
Um, members of the tribal authority.
Injupkosie.
All protocol observed.
There is a suggestion that you can mainly look at our audience, I don't know how you can make it.
Okay. Thank you for the opportunity to say a summary about the bill which we are here for.
Nyabonga ugo ti, ntole tuba lugo ti ge na ameng, ninengeze gafupi ugo ti lomte tusvinyo oma ilana nani.
As the name say it, Pidalp is the preservation and development of agricultural land for food security purposes and for growth of the country.
Njongoba ge i kamalizi isho i Pidalp, lima ilana nogu tutugi iswa kumtlaba, nogo... Zonge Pidalp, wana uzama ugo ti ge ukipel lomte tu mtaala, gungene umte tu omusha?
If it was not of subdivision of agricultural land, we could have lost a lot of agricultural land in the country.
Oma ngabe be ngaya kukutige omtlaba tilo linyua yo uya slukaniswa, ngabe silasegeluwa omtlaba... Ma njeke lomte tu, uklukaniswa kumtlaba waga nineteen seventy, awasasebenzi, sazo sebenza ge lomte tu, ozopa siswa omusha?
So Pidalp brings about a new mechanism that are going to ensure that we use agricultural land optimally in a balanced approach.
Ma njeke lomte tusvivinyo iskuluma ngau, uzo gunsensegu zoguti, omtlaba ti, nama omtlaba lo linyua yo, susebenzi sana ngentlela efanele futi e lingana yo?
Pidalp introduce mechanisms such as protected agricultural area, which is the land that currently we are farming on livestock or cropping mostly.
Ma njeke le Pidalp yona i kuluma ngalo mtsaba olinyua yo, ganyefuti lomtlaba la, sizo fuyako na infuyo ya yetu.
Eh, Pidalp, again, it introduce a mechanism of information where people will have information available to them to know what is the quality of their land.
I Pidalp ge, ipinde futi inigeze le ngoluazi, lugo ti, lomtlaba, lomtazoba lima guo, uzebe omtlaba onjani?
Currently you find that people are farming with a certain crop which is not suitable for that area and therefore Pidalp...
Usvinyo ozopa siswa la Pidalp, uzo banegel ugo ti, ngapamo kuba uklanyele la ufunuklanyela kon, uzo tolu loazu ugo ti, ngabe lomtlaba ufunuklanyela guo, uglungele yin ugo ti, ungashanyela le sichalo ufunuguti sichalo, uzepe uzo tola isi vuno esile.
So with the approval of Pidalp, you will be able to, wherever you are, search the place where you are farming, be able to know, these are more production purposes.
Ma njeke ngalo mte tusvivinyo, oma so pasile, oma o umundu olimayo, uzo wazi ugo tu, utwale uze pela logo ukchala yekuneni, uzo ktelela izetelo ezintle?
Um, the other last mechanism that I can talk to is the mechanism of cooperative governance where Pidalp makes provision for the three spheres of government to be able to cooperate and eh, share information and support the agricultural sector plans for the eh, country.
Lomte tusvivinyo ogunye ogwenza yo, ugo ti, ubangele ugo ti kpeko na uksebenzi sana, eka beni zo kulumeni zondatu, ngalo yonchele ge, abantu bazowazi ugo ti, bawi tole imnene ngwane, ma ilana, lomtlaba abafuna ukchala guo.
So in short, Pidalp is here so that we can be able to support and provide for farmers to continue farming and growing the economy of this country.
Gafupindi, lomte tusvinyo uzo legelela balim ugo ti, bazepel ugo ti kufanele batwale ngani, uze ekuneni, uzo bakona isi vuno esneenge futi esile.
Eh, Pidalp is also going to assist us to ensure that we do not lose high value agricultural land for other purposes which are not intended for agricultural production.
Bawi tu omushle ebes ngalima guo, sijengo ugo ti ngesitanga, tatumtabe kufanele smile guo, isilime guo, besi si tatalo mtsaba, si ti akubenemaini ilana, nama akwakiwizi.
In short, that is the summary, thank you.
Gafupindi, eh, is summary, ema ilana again, lomte tusvivinyo, nyabonga.
Why do you clap so lightly?
Then, uh, thank you very much, Lydia.
Siyabonga kulu, sese Lydia.
Now the members of the committee are ready.
Ma njeke amalu ngeki komite aselungele.
Let me first have five hands on my right. They are still thinking, let me have five hands on my left?